Okay, welcome. I'd like to call the meeting of the Whately School Committee to order on Monday, June 6th, uh, 2016. And we'll start with the minutes. I'd like to hold on the minutes until September when Bob's here because we need to make a direction.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, we'll do that. And we'll move on to financial statements and warrants.
Okay, so you have your reports with you, um, in front of you, and we have, um, I have encumbered, we did not get the invoices for the gas line repair, but we did get them, copies of them late today, and Mr. Lesko wasn't in, so I didn't want to pay them without his signature. But I encumbered that into our numbers. So we're looking right now, like, after we've balanced all of our accounts, we will have some monies left over at the end of the year. What I would recommend to the school committee is that first, we will pay off the school lunch debt and out, um, and the outstanding bills. Secondly, we have been on a freeze, and I know Mr. Christopher would like to buy some supplies, uh, so, and especially custodial supplies. We want to order our summer waxes and everything now, so I think we should, um, do that. Then also, we have, um, a couple of repair and maintenance projects that we've been sitting on.
Four or five?
Four or five of them.
Four or five thousand.
Oh, four or $5,000 worth, uh, including doing another repair of partitions to the bathrooms. Uh, so that would be our priority to you guys as to how we would use the funds.
Would that use up all the funds?
Yes.
How mu- is it 113,000?
No, 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 no. It'll be less than that. It, um, it'll probably, I'm looking, I think it's going to be between 20 and 30,000. So, um, and I think the lunch is going to take about 10 of that. And then, um, again, ordering all our, you know, getting our, um, these supplies that we've been holding on and fixing, oh, we can go ahead and fix your projectors, and then getting the custodial supplies that we've sort of been holding off on, get those ordered. And then the repairs and maintenance projects. I know we were looking at possibly doing, uh, getting the new ceiling panels for the, um, cafeteria.
Or painting them.
Or painting them out.
Whatever needs to be done, yeah. Those are the two things that Andy and I discussed that we would like to finish. One is, uh, there's one last bathroom. The boys' room down here has newer partitions. They weren't installed great. Andy wants to tighten that up, but the girls' room here still has the original partitions. If we get that bathroom done, that'll be, uh, the last two bathrooms out of 10 that have been completely updated.
Nice, nice.
And, uh, you know, you can just look around in here and see stains on some of the, but the cafeteria is far worse because of all the leaks. We really like to get that done this summer, too.
So, and then in September, we'll give you a complete listing on, as to how we use those funds.
So you're looking for priorities, and you're looking at, um, covering the cafeteria overage, and then the maintenance projects, correct?
Um, and catching up on a couple of supply stuff that Pete's been holding off on because of that. Getting our, all our summer maintenance materials ordered now.
All right. School committee, are you all ready for that?
I'll buy one down. We'll give it up.
Okay. And then the only other financial thing I have, um, before, because I think our lunch is on a different thing, is I did bring for you a copy of the request for proposal that will be going out for the installation of the energy management system that we're using the Green Fund grants with. Uh, this is from Bob Lesko. Um, it looks like, it says draft, and it's a two-page Word document.
Yep.
So that is what, with, once you approve that, we will be putting that out to, uh, for bid.
So you need us to approve this today?
Um, Mr. Lesko is, was out today and tomorrow. Um, he had some scheduled time off, so if you want to take it and then, um, just send us some question, if you might have some questions as you go through it, and Bob's not here to answer it, so if you agree in, in concept, but want to work on some details, that, that's fine.
Don, do you have the history of this?
No, um, I don't. Um, actually, I sort of heard through the grapevine that we had this grant, and that's when I called you and asked you about the grant and where we were with this. Um, I do remember reading about it in the paper, and, um, but there was some mention of a school, but I didn't have any idea how much funding was involved.
Well, apparently, they've put the, um, funding of it off for a couple of years, so I'm assuming it took place prior, I don't know, Pete, if you remember, it took place prior to my arrival.
Yeah.
And it was something through the towns, and a portion of the grant could go to also cover the schools, but you had to have some specifics as to how it was going to be spent, and that, you know, took a while to get. But there is a life expectancy as, as far as how far you can push this off. So this has to be done by...
The end of the calendar year.
The end of this, yes, by January 1st. So that's why we wanted to make sure that, uh...
No, I think, I mean, I think it's terrific. We upgrade our HVAC.
Yeah, no, I do, too.
With modern technology, so, you know, that should be some cost savings there for us, so. And, and theory, I'm not opposed to this. Uh, you know, I'll take a look at it, and if I have some questions, I'll give, uh, Bob a call.
Okay. How much money are we talking about? I think it's about $100,000.
Yeah. I think it's a little bit. I think it's 140, something like that.
Yeah, 130, 140,000.
Does this connect to the school being designated as the emergency location?
No.
No, this is separate?
It was, uh, the town, I, apparently, the town applied to be a green town community.
Yeah.
I have to say, four years ago, yeah.
And I recall seeing that there were monies involved, but no one ever told me, or I guess the superintendent, that there was money in, you know, involved for the school.
Okay.
And I heard about it, and then I started calling, and...
I think it kind of fell through the cracks between the superintendent changing and the town administrator changing here in Whately, and then, I think when Mark was trying to clean things up before he left, he was like, "We've got to get this going again," so...
So can I reflect in the minutes that you're supportive of it in concept, and if you have any questions, you'll get back to Bob?
Yep.
They can fix Whately spelled wrong.
Fix what?
Whately spelled wrong.
Oh.
Wotley.
Wotley.
And you have to add it to the spell check.
Yeah, I guess.
So, you know, just, uh, kind of summarize, I'm, I'm excited that this is getting done.
So are we.
Yeah, I mean, it's terrific. All right. Public, any public comment? Public comment? Okay. Unfinished business, the non-union salary recommendations.
Yes, I gave those to you last month, um, and this actually came from a Frontier School Committee member, uh, this recommendation years ago to, um, give them to you a month in advance, because in the past, they were always brought to you in June, and we asked you to vote on them right away. So we give them to you a month in advance, and then give you that time to, um, look at it, and if anyone had a question, to get in touch with me, and, so here we are. So we're asking for your approval of that.
Okay, um, I brought it with me, and we do have, uh, one person on the lunch that we, are we going to include or not include?
Um, at this point in time, it's a personnel issue, and I'm not really able to discuss it.
So we shall vote that or not?
Um, I would rather vote it and then not use it than not have it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Can I ask just a process question?
Sure.
As to, um, how are these determined?
It's 2% except...
So it's just a flat rate for everybody?
It's a flat 2%, except for Scott Paul, which I had brought to you before.
Right, and Janet's already gone.
And Janet's, Janet is in a different category because she was going to go to a different status once she completed some degree requirements, which she did.
Okay.
Okay, and her salary is totally out of the funds collective for the out-of-school-time program. It's not in the budget.
So as part of next year's budget, we've already built in an increase for this?
Now that we've negotiated the salaries, yeah.
So it's really just the exception that we're voting?
Yes, yeah, that was, that was the only one.
So, what, do you have any further discussion? Would you out entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the salaries as printed on the handout last week.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Yeah, boy, this is going to be a long meeting, Marty.
Well, wait until you get to the next part.
Okay, you mean, we're going to talk about, um, policies?
Policies.
Did you give one to Bob Becker for me?
I, I, I have an entire book for Bob.
Okay.
Um, so these are our last two policy sections. This is a momentous, momentous, redundant, but this is momentous because you were the first committee to vote on the last two sections of the policy book. I brought a copy in case you would like to read them. We can really drag this meeting out. I know.
Marty, would you start reading those?
I will.
What's your favorite section?
Actually, my favorite section was J, and it's the biggest section, but it's the one that has to do with students, and I really did enjoy that. I know, I'm sort of eclipsing it.
Clearly you are.
I did, I really did enjoy the policy. I did, Don.
Good.
I may find a second career.
Having sat on a couple of those policy reviews, I, I just never found it that enjoyable.
You can ask my fellow committee members, they just were in awe.
I'm with you, Don. There's some things I love, and then there's some things that I just find torturous, and that's why, language things are torturous.
It was fascinating to me, because this really, I know nobody wants to hear it, but it, it really is sort of the bible for how school districts should run.
You need good policies.
It's really important to do, and it has the proper legal references. It's going to be online in August. You will be able to do a search by any word of interest. It's going to be, it'll be a nice legacy for me to leave to all of you.
I will, I will say.
Well, that segues right into what I wanted to say, Mrs. Barrett.
Okay.
On behalf of our committee, and I'm sure of all the committees, and the new superintendent, I would, I thank you for taking this on, because you could have easily said, "I'll leave it for the next guy." And you didn't, and we appreciate the fact that you did it, and everything's in order, and typical Marty Barrett style, like, everything's going to be in order when you leave, so I do appreciate that.
I'm going to be watching in September, but I'm hearing all sorts of complaints. I will never watch again.
Please do something better with your retirement than watch.
Yes, Bill, it's scintillating to you.
You won't get any complaints from here.
Okay, well, thank you. But thank you very much. I did have fun doing it, and, and it was a great committee, so I ask for your approval of, um, Sections L and K.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Policy Sections K and L.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. The record show 2-0.
There you go. Whately is the first.
Right.
Whately has a full policy book.
Yeah, Whately.
We are the first and the best. All right, so we are going to talk about the cafeteria.
Yeah, so I put some reports in front of you. Um, I didn't mean to staple them, but they did get stapled. Um, but, so the first one is our profit and loss for the year, um, through May, and we're looking at, through May, we have a $9,654.83 loss, and we have about $1,000 outstanding balances. Now, we usually do a very good job at the end of the school year, cleaning up those balances, um, so I'm not that concerned with those. June, we do sometimes make a profit in June because we're not buying anything, we're just using up our inventory. It's very creative lunch month, so we're just trying to use up our inventory. So this isn't the end. I, I do expect it to go down a little bit with the month of June. But why are we losing money? Uh, that's, that's the question. And the next page is our, um, our average daily participation. So if we compare it to last year, we can see, um, and this is only year-to-date through May, so if you look at the second page, we're down 343 meals from last year, yet we're up 2,0121. But our participation is down about 8%. So when I look at, and the last page is all the schools, all four elementaries for Union 38. So when I look at our, our participation, we're, we're up there. We're like the, the best school in participation, and I think it's just because if we look at our meal per service hour, because we have to have a minimum of two people in the cafeteria to serve and count lunches, it's the wages that throw us off. And that's about 57% of all of our costs is our, is our payroll, and there's nothing we can do about that, because we do need the minimum of two people.
Is there, isn't there a third person in there?
There's a third person who oversees and does the monthly closings and does the financials. And she does the menu, the menu planning. But the two people, so if we were to look at the number based on, there's a metric called meal per service hour, and ours should probably be about a four, and ours is probably about a seven. It's probably almost double what it should be, based on the number of meals that we serve. But you can't have one person behind the counter, it just doesn't work.
So there are a couple of things that I, you know, I mean, there's a couple of things, as I alluded to earlier, that, that Patty and I are going to be discussing later in the week, um, around personnel and how, you know, we look at that. But because your school is so small, and because you still need the same number of people that Conway and Sunderland, Sunderland has...
Conway is losing money as well, just not at such a pace as we are.
But I think the committee needs to be thinking, should you, in future budgeting, budget a portion or a salary in your budget that at least you can plan on in the future, rather than at the end of every year? Now, we've been lucky, this year and last year and the year before, we've had enough money in either end of the year or school of choice, uh, to put towards that, but there may come a time where you can't plan for that, and this would at least allow you to plan for it. And Don probably remembers, years ago, we did have salaries or a portion of the salaries in the cafeteria in...
Actually, at Whately, we carried the full salaries.
Did you? Okay. In different schools, they did different, different amounts, and then, then they stopped doing that. So it, it may be something for you all to think about in the fall.
I would ask that Patty remind us, and keep in your mind when we're starting on the budget, to put that in there, so we can, we will have that discussion.
I'll reflect that in the minutes as well.
And I don't know if, um, I don't know if at maybe the October meeting, our joint meeting, if we want to make the cafeteria, the status of the district-wide cafeterias and, uh, something that you all want to discuss together. Uh, is there something else you want to do, or do you want to just support them through the budget? Uh, and, but that would have to be, you know, all, all five together, so I don't know. And that's something we can talk about in September, and we can talk to the new superintendent if, if there's, if there's something we want to do district-wide, to take a look at the program.
Yeah, like, all in favor of that?
But, so do we have a district-wide program? I guess I'm still confused about that one position.
No.
Isn't there a shared position?
There is a shared position. We have one person who, um, is the head of the Frontier, and she also does all the supervisory work at Sunderland and Whately.
Okay. So that's an added cost for us as a school.
Yeah, correct.
Right? So, I mean, in the past, we didn't have that.
Yes, we did, but it wasn't being done properly.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have anybody in the position to take over that, that role, but, like, as, as superintendent said, she and I are going to be reviewing all four schools and Frontier and talking about different, different things.
Because everybody's pretty much in the same boat. It's not like there's anybody, I mean, Deerfield is, is kind of keeping their head above water.
But that, but that, that was a, I mean, they went, they did go with their new person there. They went from losing money to they're going to make a little money. They're at break even. They're going to make like a thousand dollars.
And what was the difference for them?
They're a larger school.
They're a larger school, and we have a new food service director who's very experienced. We lucked out, he had retired from, um, a school system in Connecticut, moved, and then decided he wasn't ready to retire. So this is like his little hobby is, is running the Deerfield school. So he made a lot of changes in the menus, in how he purchases things, and I'm hoping that some of the other elementary schools can, um, follow his lead and, and, and replicate that. Sunderland, with their breakfast program, they're probably going to just break even as well, but you and Conway are losing money.
And I have to say, you know, and I think I've said it before, other school districts are facing the same thing. And I've seen so many combinations of different scenarios where you have an outside food company come in, and that has good, bad, you know, ramifications. Sometimes they'll prepare things in a central location, truck it out, but there's expenses involved, and I, having lived through that, I don't think the quality of the food is, is as good. Um, I do think there are many things that we could do to improve upon our menu creation, that we could do more from scratch cooking, um, we have in the past, so I'd like to see more of that. So I think there's, there's areas to be worked on, um, and areas to improve. I don't see it as throwing your hands up in the air saying there's no, no way to solve this. I think there is.
So this is for next year's budget, really, at this point?
Right.
In terms of any changes?
Well, 18, because we did seven, so I mean...
That's the next budget process.
Correct. So like Don said, when we get to that point, I have to remember, and Marty will put in the notes, and maybe it'll be something we talk about at the October joint meeting.
But, you know, I just want to say it again, that this is an inherent problem.
It is.
It's, it's gone on for years. I mean, as long as I was a principal, and, you know, right up until now, I mean, it's, this is nothing new, and, you know...
Well, it's worsened with the new food.
Yeah, with the regs.
Yeah, the regs have absolutely made it.
You know, but we are buying a lot of local, and, you know, with those regs, there was like some sunshine, because we have to have different colored vegetables during the week, so we're buying more fresh vegetables from our local farmers, which is, which is great for the community, too.
The, um, the other thing is that you don't get the kind of commodities that you got before.
No, no.
So, you know, it's, uh, it's, you're really up against it, so, you know, I'm glad we're going to have that discussion, but I really do think that we need to get something in the budget, so we're not strapped at the end of the year.
Right, I agree.
I'm glad that we have money right now to cover this, and we're obligated to, we can't carry it over.
Correct.
I agree with you, Don, and I, I, I think that one thing that it'll provide, uh, I mean, if we look at it the way we've been doing it, which is covering the overage every year, we are supporting it through the budget already. If we took a salary, let's say, of a full-time person in the kitchen, for example, and put that in the budget, at least we know now, that's a standard, you know, now it's built in, it's not going to necessarily change. And my guess is that our overage every year, I don't know all the numbers, Patty, but my guess is that if we moved one salary into the budget, that we would probably start hitting the black in the rest of the program.
Yeah.
And then we won't have to worry about how much are we going to have to cover, because we've taken care of it, and it's already in the budget, and it's coming out of the budget as it is anyway.
No, I think you're absolutely right, Pete.
And I really would like to put a plug in just for, um, I'm not opposed to seeing something happen district-wide. I would, I would hate to see a real institutional approach to it. We really have the benefit of having a nice local approach to it, where we can buy local, we can cook from scratch, uh, offer a nice salad bar, and I think you'll lose a lot of that with a big industrial company, hoping it'll ever go in that direction.
I would not support that either, but I'm just saying it's an option out there.
Certainly worth talking about.
But Whately should be very pleased with the percentage of kids.
Participants.
Yeah, participation rate is, is very high, so...
And by the way, are these, are these just, um, students, or does it include staff participation in that?
No, staff, this is just what we have, the metrics we go by for student lunches. Uh, we look at adult meals as just an added bonus. So if you look, um, adult meals are bringing in almost 4% of our revenue.
Do you have any other questions on that?
Nope.
Katie? All right, boy, we're into reports already, Mrs. Barrett?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sklaski really doesn't have a report, but I did want to, since this is Mrs. Barrett's last meeting in Whately, I did want to publicly thank her for all the work and effort she's put into this position, and the work that she did before. Um, it's always been a pleasure working with Mrs. Barrett, and, um, I've enjoyed it. We've had some good laughs, and sometimes we didn't laugh, but overall, it was quite an experience, and I, I do want to thank Mrs. Barrett, um, for doing an excellent job, and I really mean that from the bottom of my heart, as a committee member and as a person.
Thank you, Don.
You did a great job.
Appreciate that. I think Don and I have been working together since 1988 in some capacity, so we've gone through middle age, and now we're into our golden years.
It's a grand parrot.
Grand parrot, watched our kids grow up, and now, yep, we had the first grand child.
It hit the ball, Lee.
Yeah, yeah, both of us are getting shorter as we get older, but, no, it has, it's been a pleasure, um, to serve this committee and this community, and then the community at large, so thank you.
Thank you. And as a newcomer, I would like to add my thank you for all that you've done, and my new appreciation of the superintendent role, and how challenging that can be.
It is a challenging job.
It's one of those jobs. Um, and I reached out to the PTO, and they would like to thank you also, and they have a little gift for you. I know you didn't want gifts, but I don't know if this is the right time to make the presentation.
No, this is fine, I think that's great.
Just a little something to remember, Whately.
Recognize our PTO.
And our PTO.
Well...
Thank you.
Oh.
So we wanted to make sure that you sported the Whately colors.
Ah, cool.
When you're out in your garden room.
When you're waving to us, you're going to be cheering us up.
Well, thank you very much, that's very...
What you're saying, it's not my problem.
I know, with Don, I know. That's the problem, because, you know, I still live in the district, and Don still lives in the district, so it's impossible not to stay connected.
Connected, yeah.
I'll read this at some point, but thank you very much, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank PTO. So, no, it's been, it's been an interesting ride, as they say.
Well done, Mrs. Barrett.
Thank you.
Well done, Lucy.
You're here.
All right, so, with that said, principals' report.
Yep, so I put a paper in front of you, there's not much on it, but I just wanted to give you a quick update, if you find mine, I'll share with you what I wrote on it. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware, because I don't know that I've brought this up before, but because of the roof project at Deerfield this summer, we have some programs happening in Whately this summer for the first time in my memory. I don't know if, prior to that, we had a lot of summer programming here, but this year we will. And, um, it's going to be mostly preschool programs from Deerfield, and some reading support and other things, um, that are going to be located mostly in the early education wing, and, um, the custodial crew, number two, is, is ready to, uh, address that this summer. We haven't done it before, tried to work around programs in the building, but I have a lot of confidence in the crew, and I don't anticipate that it'll be too problematic. We will get to the rooms that are used at the end of the summer. Most of them will be done by early August, and I'm sure we can get caught up at that point, but I just wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of that, and that's all I have for my report. If you have any questions, of course, we'll have to try to answer them.
I'd just like to say I appreciate Pete picking up the overflow, because Deerfield does house in a tremendous amount of summer programs, and so we have to farm them out. A lot of them are going to Sunderland, but it seemed to make sense to put a particular age group in one spot. So Pete was good enough to step up to the plate. It's centrally located with Sunderland and Whately, and, um, you know, I'm hoping that because we have such a long summer this summer, that even with the added burden in the building, that the custodians will still have time to, to prep for opening day.
I think we'll be okay. We don't, you know, foresee any unanticipated concerns, although that's why they called although that's why they called unanticipated because they come up when they don't, they didn't really think about them. But we did try to really give a lot of thought to both the grounds maintenance and the building. And we do have clear schedules about when people are coming and leaving. I've already been in touch with several of the staff that are coming to the building. My intention is to be available to them when they first get here and make sure they get grounded and that they have what they need.
And Bob Lesko's aware, he knows that when summer programs and kind of call it swooping in, getting custodial crews to swoop into Sunderland and swoop into Wheatley so that...
And Deerfield when the roof starts.
Yes, concentrated effort to get the buildings open.
So is there any budgetary impact of moving the programs here?
No.
I think, Katie, the only thing I think we'll probably do is use more of our jug water this summer because kids are going to want to drink water. And we do use coolers here primarily. So we'll probably, you know, spill a little more on water this summer.
Yeah, it shouldn't be significant.
And I had another question, which isn't really related about Wheatley, but I heard that they were not going to have full-day preschool anymore or full-day childcare next year? Is that wrong?
In Wheatley?
Or in general, in Deerfield. Is that not true?
No, that's not true. Not that we're aware.
Wheatley's had a half...
Wheatley's never had it, but at Deerfield, they've always had a full-day program.
We have three full-day programs.
They have three classrooms that are full-day.
Yeah.
I just heard someone explained that they were breaking it into like after-school and regular day.
That might be the Friday program.
The early release program?
Okay. Well, we might make some...
But that has nothing to do with preschool.
No, it has nothing to do with preschool.
Yeah.
It's good to know, so. Didn't think it was a good idea.
No, that doesn't, it's a first effort of that.
Do you have a report, Miss Barrett?
I don't. I just wanted to thank everyone for their support.
I didn't think you would.
Yeah.
I didn't expect one, to be honest with you. So...
So what happens over the summer is that we don't have meetings?
We don't meet July or August unless there's an emergency.
But we're there if you need us, Katie.
Yeah, I have to get re-elected, so maybe...
Oh, you guys haven't had your reelection yet.
When is that?
I think it's this week. But I don't think there's anyone running.
It might be tomorrow. But there's no one running.
I think it's tomorrow.
There's nobody took papers out against you. Okay. Well, hopefully that'll work. Yeah, we always did our reorganization of Wheatley and Frontier in September. Deerfield, we do this week. And I think Sunderland and Conway we do as well in June. But the other two we do.
And there's nothing really that happens over the summer?
No, I mean, unless there was some catastrophe, you know, which you never want to have happen.
So what we're doing in the summer is that we're closing out this year, getting the new year open.